Good afternoon, I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Kobe Charthez from Portsmouth First Friends Church? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by our Boy Scout Troop 256. And if you would, right after the invocation, we'll proceed up. Thank you. Pastor, good day.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity tonight, Lord, to serve, not only serve each other, not only to serve the community of Portsmouth, but, Lord, to serve you. And God, we ask for wisdom, we ask for guidance, we ask for your direction in all that we do, Lord. God, I pray for these men and women that have been elected into these positions of leadership into this great city, Lord. God, we ask that you just pour your spirit down on them, have their thoughts as your thoughts, have their will as your will, have their agenda as your agenda. God, we know that you are mighty and you can do all things, Lord, and we thank you for all that you do in our lives, we thank you for the many blessings. Lord, we ask for special protection and a special blessing on our military members, Lord, our police officers out in harm's way, God, our firefighters and our first responders. Lord, we thank you for their dedication to everybody around. God, we thank you for all that you do. May all we do tonight glorify you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you very much. And before our Boy Scouts leave, I want to give you an opportunity, tell us a little bit about Troop 256, maybe some of your major fundraisers and things you're doing in the community. We're proud of you guys, great to see you back again this year.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is Troop 256, and we also have two members from Troop 210, both located here in the city of Portsmouth. And our young men have come out tonight to observe a council meeting as a part of earning their citizenship in the community merit badge. So we thank you so much for having us.
All right, very good. Great job, guys. And I hope this meeting is all of what you thought it was going to be. All right. Members of the City Council, please indicate your presence electronically. Madam Clerk?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of January 12, 2015, a call meeting of January 13, 2015, a regular meeting of January 13, 2015, and a call meeting of January 20, 2015. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
With adoption. Okay. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Fifteen dash forty-five, presentation. Presentation of a proclamation for Constitutional Officers Week. If our fine constitutional officers, the Honorable Cynthia Morrison, Clerk of the Circuit Court, Mr. Jimmy Williams, our City Treasurer, Mr. William Watson, our Sheriff, Ms. Mary Lester with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Mr. Cardell Patillo, Sr., with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, would please come forward to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk and join the mayor for the presentation. And while the mayor is preparing, we have several members of the departments for these constitutional officers in the audience, and the mayor will recognize them next.
First of all, we want to thank each and every one of you, we really appreciate our partnership with the city and our citizens and all the things that we do to get as a city, a locality, as well as the Commonwealth, to serve our citizens. And it's sad that we only recognize you during this one week, but, and I think you heard from all of us at times of time, we're always talking about the great work that each of you do. I think we talked the other day, I was talking about, at a retirement party in the Treasurer's office with two of his long-term employees, and we talked about cross-training and people working and working together to make sure we serve all folks, and I think one of the other things we applauded was Ms. Morrison in her office with a lot of those same types of things. It's just wonderful to hear our citizens talk about the great work you do. I don't, I think it was a couple of months ago, I called you with some young lady that wanted me to know the great work that you did in your office and the young lady that worked for you, and she was in the wrong city. And the time and attention that the young lady, and I actually came over to your office and asked, who was this front office person? I didn't know her name, and Ms. Morrison took me over there, and I guess the young lady thought she had done something wrong, here's her boss and the mayor standing at her desk, and I wanted to let her know that this citizen called, and she just, do you care to elaborate a little bit about that?
The clerk was my deputy clerk, Emma Williams, and she works as our receptionist at the front desk, so she's the face of contact for the clerk's office, and she's very good about handling and helping citizens with whatever their problems are.
I guess the lady felt bad she was in the wrong city, and she wanted to at least let the mayor know. Please tell those folks, and Mr. Williams, and I won't jump around because I've got a proclamation here I want to read, but we had a very good retirement for those three ladies in your office that had over thirty-something years' experience, I think, one? And you want to speak just a little bit?
He's referencing deputies Marion Lewis and Irma Boone in our real estate department, and Donna Jensen who was in our personal property department, and I think in combination they had about forty-eight years, and somebody can correct me, but I think I'm close, but hate to lose them, but we've replaced them and we haven't skipped a beat, so please stop by and meet all of us. Thank you so much.
Okay, and before I get to the proclamation, we want to hear something from our sheriff, who we're always getting positive feedback about the great work that you're doing in our community, and so I'll give you a moment.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. It's all about the people. The people put me in office as sheriff, and I promised them from the first day that I would serve them, and that's what it's all about. You pay your taxes, you obey the law, you try to do your best, but sometimes you get hit on hard times, you need a little help once in a while. All you have to do is just call us, and we'll be right there for you. I work for you. Thank you very much.
And we're not going to leave our Commissioner of Revenue out. The boss isn't here, but the boss is our number-one guy here, so is there something you want to add, sir? You're fine? Okay. All right, now, this proclamation reads as follows, now, you don't often get a chance to speak with the mayor, all right? Whereas Article VII, Section 1 of the Constitution of Virginia provides for the direct election of local officials charged with the critically important duties of maintenance of the public records, operation of the circuit courts, prosecution of criminals, protection of public safety, and administration and collection of local revenues. And whereas the Virginia clerks of the circuit courts, the Commissioner of Revenue, the Commonwealth's Attorney, the sheriff, and the Treasurers continue a tradition of local administration of government functions that predates the American Revolution. So you've been around a little while. And whereas, Virginia's constitutional officers and the women and men who serve in those offices provide the people of Virginia with direct links to their government at a local level, unfiltered by bureaucracy, and are responsive to citizens' needs. And whereas, as Virginia's constitutional officers are setting new standards of customer service, innovative service delivery, and responsiveness that all public servants across the Commonwealth should emulate. And whereas, Kenneth I. Wright, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of January 26 through 30 of 2015 as Constitutional Officers Week in the city of Portsmouth, urging all of our citizens to familiarize themselves with the services provided by Virginia's constitutional office. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia to be affixed to this twenty-seventh day of January 2015. Signed, Kenneth I. Wright, Mayor. And again, I want to say, from the bottom of my heart, and I speak for all of our citizens, thank you, thank you, thank you for the job that you do. It's not often that we get calls with people that don't know where to go, but when they do come, you guys provide the service that they need and make that delivery to the point that people are satisfied when they leave. Sometimes they talk about how bureaucracy builds up, we've got to go to this floor and that floor, and it is just amazing when someone comes from the wrong city and you give them the same courtesy that you would someone else here. It speaks about you and the work that you and your people do, so thank you and congratulations. How about a hand for each member? This is my show, you get over here. We've got some people here we want to recognize, and I have identified a spokesperson, and Mr. Williams, if you would kindly introduce these fine fellow citizens here.
I hope I can remember all the names. Y'all stand up, please, Treasurer's Office deputies, everybody stand up. That's the Treasurer's Office. Margaret English, raise your hand. Jennifer Bennett. Kiara Branch. Martha Walton. Valerie Jordan. Lucille Davis. Debbie Harper. Debbie just joined us from North Umland County, she worked in the Treasurer's Office, they have moved to the area, and I found out about it, and she's now replaced one of the retirees. Shawn Gardner. Ray Joe Mosley. And Miss Michelle Masters. Attorney Michael Peluso. And Ryan Melton. We are here to serve the citizens, just like Bill said. We were elected by the citizens, we served the citizens, we also recognize the importance our office does for you, Mr. Mayor, the Council, the City Manager, and his staff. So please call on us, if we don't hear from you, we might not know what we can do to help. So thank you, and God bless.
All right, before you sit down, who was responsible for the chocolate-dipped cherries at the port? Oh, there she is. You take a bow. I think I had more than my share of chocolate-dipped cherries, that's right. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Commissioner of Revenue's staff, stand up. Kevin O'Brien. Y'all are going to have to help me, I can't see through those.
Dana Crocker.
Dana Crocker. Dana, right, Wanda Smith.
Linda.
Linda. Former acting police chief. There he is. Skip, and in the back, I really apologize, I can't see through this light.
Nada Walker. Ms. Hannah Lee. Gina Slaughter.
Okay. Thank y'all.
All right, thank y'all very much, and thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am? Thank you, sir. Well done. Good job. The cherries are Friday, I'll be back. All right, thank you, sir. That's right, look, you can tell they're professionals, they know their cue when it's time to leave. Again, thank y'all for coming, and before our Clerk of Court leaves, I see her husband, the Honorable Judge Johnny Morrison, Chief Judge of the Circuit Court. Judge, would you stand? I'm sure you provide a service over there as well. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, fifteen dash forty-six. Public hearing on the proposed amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Enterprise Zone. Ms. Mallory, Kayla will come forward for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Vice Mayor, members of council. This evening, I'm here to bring you information on Enterprise Zone Number One, our first Enterprise Zone that we received in 2010, and to request your permission to submit an application to make modifications to two of those local incentives. Again, we are looking to modify two local incentives in Zone Number One to conform to our Zone Number Two, the same incentives that are in that second zone. As a reminder and as some background, the Enterprise Zone program was established by the General Assembly in 1982. It is a partnership between the state and the localities. It is one of the most effective methods of using incentives to boost and create and stimulate economic development. Any individual community in the Commonwealth may have up to three zones. Each zone has its own geographic boundaries. Within that geographic boundary, each zone may have up to three non-contiguous areas. The three non-contiguous areas, when combined, can equal as much as seven percent of the city's geography in Portsmouth. Portsmouth is fortunate enough to have two zones. Our first zone was designated in 2010. There were some minor amendments that you approved and the state agreed with in 2012, and we are requesting further refinement to get it just right here in 2015. Again, we received a second zone in 2014, and each of these individual zones, from the start of their inception, has a ten-year life and two five-year renewals, so it's very possible that each of those zones will have a twenty-year lifespan. Currently, across the Commonwealth, there are fifty-seven zones, and in 2005, the General Assembly started making efforts to reduce those zones down to thirty across the Commonwealth. They are slowly doing that, year by year, as they reduce the number of designated zones. It is a competitive process when a city receives an Enterprise Zone. We have gone through this now twice. In each time, there has been a scoring system that consists of both a distress criteria as well as a scoring system for the strategy, incentives, and capacity to utilize the zone that a community puts forth. The state actually determines the distress criteria based on three factors that they evaluate. They evaluate the unemployment rate of the locality, they evaluate the median adjusted gross income of the community, and they evaluate the percentage of students receiving reduced or free lunch. Portsmouth's distress criteria is five hundred and fifty. Out of one hundred and thirty-three communities across the Commonwealth, there are only twenty-two that have a distress criteria that is either greater or, in essence, more challenging than Portsmouth's. Again, this evening, we're here to talk to you about Enterprise Zone Number One. The boundaries for that zone consist of three non-contiguous areas that constitute about seven percent of the city's geography, or just shy of seven. It includes an area, and I have a map here in the next slide, that starts on the downtown waterfront, extends west to Midtown, and extends north along the Virginia Avenue corridor. The second area is the Victory Area that extends down Elmhurst Lane and to Greenwood Industrial Park, and then the third non-contiguous area is the Mass Center. As you can see in this map on the screen, we're talking about Zone Number One, which is the yellow area highlighted on the map. Just as a reference, Zone Number Two is highlighted in red. Again, this evening, we're asking you to look at two of the local incentives that are in Enterprise Zone Number One, and asking you to approve our application to modify these two incentives to conform with Zone Number Two's criteria. You can see the state has its two incentives, which are the same throughout all the fifty-seven zones across the Commonwealth, and here in Zone Number One, we have a package of incentives that are tailored to the geography in Zone Number One, as well as the commercial land use in Zone Number One. Again, we're going to look to you to ask for your permission to submit an application to reduce the criterias for these two in red. The first is the Business Personal Property Investment Grant. We are asking that you give us permission to eliminate the qualification that a company be in a targeted industry. We are asking that you allow us to reduce the criteria of creating ten jobs to five jobs. By doing that, this criteria will now mirror the criteria that is in Zone Number Two that was approved in 2014 by the governor. This will give conformity to the two zones with respect to this incentive. Similarly, with the Machinery and Tool Investment Grant, we are asking to reduce the minimum job criteria to five, to reduce the capital investment in machinery and tools to five hundred thousand, and to eliminate any wage requirement that exceeds the minimum wage requirement. Again, by making these changes, we will then have this incentive's criteria conform to that of Zone Number Two, and they will be mirrors of each other as far as the minimum criteria. As a reminder, these two grants are, these two incentives and grants are funded from new revenue that is produced as a result of the qualifying companies meeting the criteria and paying their taxes on these new business personal property or machinery and tools, so it is a self-funding program based on the companies and their commitment and investment. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mallory. Mallory, can you speak to the reduction in job criteria from ten to five? Some citizens may wonder why we're going along with that.
Certainly. In putting the first zone together, we were very aggressive in our criteria and goals for companies. We found when it came to put Zone Number Two together that companies were not hiring folks as quickly post-recession as we had anticipated, and this allows the opportunity for companies who are slowly growing the employment but making the capital investment to qualify for this. It also opens up the opportunity for smaller businesses to qualify for this incentive, not just the larger businesses in the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, that was my question as far as the logic behind reducing it from ten to five. Are there any present development that's going on in these zones that is behind why we are trying to do this change?
We are already entertaining companies now that would be able to benefit from these reduced thresholds, so we are actively promoting the zones and anticipating that companies will be able to take advantage of these if you all in the state approve them.
So was there some type of strain that was witnessed as far as companies having to hire ten employees under the old criteria that you're saying is a necessity now to change it to five?
We found that we were just too aggressive in setting that bar for companies to be able to take advantage of this. Oftentimes, companies are either hiring or doing capital investment, but to be able to do both at such a high level was more of a challenge than we had thought it would be.
Are there any diversity requirements as far as the Enterprise Zone is concerned?
No, sir. They're available to each and every business.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mallory. Great work.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on the proposed amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Enterprise Zone. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this proposed amendment application. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Move for adoption?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Good, but not yet. City Managers Report, fifteen dash forty-seven. Adoption of an ordinance to appropriate forty-four million, two-hundred, forty-eight-thousand, five-hundred, twelve dollars in additional revenue and forty-four million, two-hundred, forty-eight-thousand, five-hundred, twelve dollars in additional expenditures in the FY 2014-15 operating and capital improvement budgets. Vision principle: Efficient, responsive government. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash forty-eight, and I'm going to read both items even though they require separate actions. Item A, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter Thirty-five of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia pertaining to the city's second Enterprise Zone. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. Item B, adoption of a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute an Enterprise Zone Local Incentives Grant Funding Agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth regarding the city's second Enterprise Zone. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. And I have no speakers on either of these items.
Okay, and we're going to vote on both of these items?
Item A first.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Item B?
For adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just have a question. The, as it reads, the role of the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, what is exactly the EDA's role in this process, Mr. Manager?
Chuck, would you come forward, please?
You better bring Mallory, she's the expert.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
How you doing, Chuck?
Good, great, thank you. The Economic Development Authority both administers the Enterprise Zone and is responsible for making sure that it's being fully marketed and prepared for businesses to come into the City of Portsmouth.
In addition, the Constitution prohibits local governments from giving grants, and that's why you have such things as the Economic Development Authority, the Housing Authority. They can lend money, they can give grants where cities and counties cannot do that.
Gentlemen, speaking on those grants, thank you, Mr. Manager. Those funds are approved by the Council and directed toward the EDA, and then the EDA issues those grants.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Okay, we're voting?
Yes, sir, you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash forty-nine. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to modify two local incentives for the city's first empowerment zone, excuse me, Enterprise Zone, I'm sorry. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash fifty. Adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 edition of the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call. And we have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash fifty. Adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 edition of the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call. And we have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash fifty. Adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 edition of the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call. And we have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash forty-nine. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Enterprise Zone. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash fifty. Adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 edition of the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Item B?
For adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just have a question. The, as it reads, the role of the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, what is exactly the EDA's role in this process, Mr. Manager?
Chuck, would you come forward, please?
You better bring Mallory, she's the expert.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
How you doing, Chuck?
Good, great, thank you. The Economic Development Authority both administers the Enterprise Zone and is responsible for making sure that it's being fully marketed and prepared for businesses to come into the City of Portsmouth.
In addition, the Constitution prohibits local governments from giving grants, and that's why you have such things as the Economic Development Authority, the Housing Authority. They can lend money, they can give grants where cities and counties cannot do that.
Gentlemen, speaking on those grants, thank you, Mr. Manager. Those funds are approved by the Council and directed toward the EDA, and then the EDA issues those grants.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Okay, we're voting?
Yes, sir, you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash forty-nine. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to modify two local incentives for the city's first empowerment zone, excuse me, Enterprise Zone, I'm sorry. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. Item B?
For adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just have a question. The, as it reads, the role of the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, what is exactly the EDA's role in this process, Mr. Manager?
Chuck, would you come forward, please?
You better bring Mallory, she's the expert.
Vice Mayor.
How you doing, Chuck?
Good, great, thank you. The Economic Development Authority both administers the Enterprise Zone and is responsible for making sure that it's being fully marketed and prepared for businesses to come into the City of Portsmouth.
In addition, the Constitution prohibits local governments from giving grants, and that's why you have such things as the Economic Development Authority, the Housing Authority. They can lend money, they can give grants where cities and counties cannot do that.
Gentlemen, speaking on those grants, thank you, Mr. Manager. Those funds are approved by the Council and directed toward the EDA, and then the EDA issues those grants.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Okay, we're voting?
Yes, sir, you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero. Fifteen dash forty-nine. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to modify two local incentives for the city's first empowerment zone, excuse me, Enterprise Zone, I'm sorry. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Second area is the victory area that extends down Elmhurst Lane and to Greenwood Industrial Park. And then the third non-contiguous area is the Mass Center. As you can see in this map on the screen, we're talking about zone number one, which is the yellow area highlighted on the map. Just as a reference, zone number two is highlighted in red. Again, this evening, we're asking you to look at two of the local incentives that are in enterprise zone number one, and asking you to approve our application to modify these two incentives to conform with zone number two's criteria. You can see the state has its two incentives, which are the same throughout all the 57 zones across the Commonwealth. And here in zone number one, we have a package of incentives that are tailored to the geography in zone number one, as well as the commercial land use in zone number one. Again, we're going to look to you to ask for your permission to submit an application to reduce the criterias for these two in red. The first is the Business Personal Property Investment Grant. We are asking that you give us permission to eliminate the qualification that a company be in a targeted industry. We are asking that you allow us to reduce the criteria of creating 10 jobs to five jobs. By doing that, this criteria will now mirror the criteria that is in zone number two that was approved in 2014 by the governor. This will give conformity to the two zones with respect to this incentive. Similarly, with the Machinery and Tool Investment Grant, we are asking to reduce the minimum job criteria to five, to reduce the capital investment in machinery and tools to $500,000, and to eliminate any wage requirement that exceeds the minimum wage requirement. Again, by making these changes, we will then have this incentive's criteria conform to that of zone number two, and they will be mirrors of each other as far as the minimum criteria. As a reminder, these two grants are, these two incentives and grants are funded from new revenue that is produced as a result of the qualifying companies meeting the criteria and paying their taxes on these new business personal property or machinery and tools. So it is a self-funding program based on the companies and their commitment and investment. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mallory. Mallory, can you speak to the reduction in job criteria from 10 to five? Some citizens may wonder why we're going along with that.
Certainly. In putting the first zone together, we were very aggressive in our criteria and goals for companies. We found when it came to put zone number two together that companies were not hiring folks as quickly post-recession as we had anticipated. And this allows the opportunity for companies who are slowly growing the employment, but making the capital investment to qualify for this. It also opens up the opportunity for smaller businesses to qualify for this incentive, not just the larger businesses in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, that was my question as far as the logic behind reducing it from 10 to five. Are there any present development that's going on in these zones that is behind why we are trying to do this change?
We are already entertaining companies now that would be able to benefit from these reduced thresholds. So we are actively promoting the zones and anticipating that companies will be able to take advantage of these if you all in the state approve them.
So was there some type of strain that was witnessed as far as companies having to hire 10 employees under the old criteria that you're saying it's a necessity now to change it to five?
We found that we were just too aggressive in setting that bar for companies to be able to take advantage of this. Oftentimes, companies are either hiring or doing capital investment, but to be able to do both at such a high level was more of a challenge than we had thought it would be.
Are there any diversity requirements as far as the enterprise zone is concerned?
No, sir. They're available to each and every business.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mallory. Great work.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on the proposed amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the enterprise zone. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this proposed amendment application. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Move for adoption?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Good, but not yet. City managers report 15-47, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $44,248,512 in additional revenue and $44,248,512 in additional expenditures in the FY 2014-15 operating and capital improvement budgets. Vision principle: Efficient, responsive government, electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-48, and I'm going to read both items even though they require separate actions. Item A, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 35 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, pertaining to the city's second enterprise zone. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call. Item B, adoption of a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an enterprise zone local incentives grant funding agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth regarding the city's second enterprise zone. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call. And I have no speakers on either of these items.
Okay, and we're going to vote on both of these items?
Item A first.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. Item B?
For adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just have a question. The, as it reads, the role of the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, what is exactly the EDA's role in this process, Mr. Manager?
Chuck, would you come forward, please?
You better bring Mallory. She's the expert.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
How you doing, Chuck?
Good, great, thank you. The Economic Development Authority both administers the enterprise zone and is responsible for making sure that it's being fully marketed and prepared for businesses to come into the City of Portsmouth.
In addition, the Constitution prohibits local governments from giving grants, and that's why you have such things as the Economic Development Authority, the Housing Authority. They can lend money, they can give grants where cities and counties cannot do that.
Gentlemen, speaking on those grants, thank you, Mr. Manager. Those funds are approved by the council and directed toward the EDA, and then the EDA issues those grants.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Okay, we're voting?
Yes, sir, you're voting electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0. 15-49, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an amendment application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to modify two local incentives for the city's first empowerment zone. Excuse me, enterprise zone, I'm sorry. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-50, adoption of a resolution approving the 2015 edition of the emergency operations plan for the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community, electronic roll call. And we have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-51, adoption of a resolution approving amendment of the service agreement of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority to restructure the agreement's reserves policy. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers.
Let me, if I could, Mr. Manager, would you just inform the public of what this matter entails? I know most of us here on council, all of us should understand what this is doing, but our agreement that we have as a region with our sister cities Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton, and how we conduct and operate the regional jail, could you spend a minute doing it?
Yes, sir. And I'll ask Brandon Godfrey to come to the lectern also. This is the service agreement that is the origination document for the creation of the regional jail. We've added since its creation the city of Chesapeake. And what this action actually does is strengthen the financial stability of the regional jail by creating different amounts, stronger amounts for cash reserves. Brandon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ray, or members of City Council. Yeah, the service agreement is the agreement that is the overriding document governing the jail authority. It is the document that each of the five cities that now belong to it must abide by. And so the proposed change comes from the jail authority to amend its reserve policy, and therefore, for it to be enacted, each of the city councils of those five cities has to approve it. And as John mentioned, the jail authorities, you know, has undergone some fiscal changes over the last year, starting with the decline in revenues from the complete elimination of ICE detainees, to the budget issues that we dealt with as a result of that a year ago, to the resolution by adding the City of Chesapeake as a member last summer. And all of those things have affected the reserve policies. There are three reserve funds that are, that are balanced by the amount of reserves that they must keep in each fund and the deadline for replenishing those funds when they get below that balance. And so what this amendment does is rebalance that for these changes that we've undergone in the last year.
Okay, thank you. And we've got a motion and a second?
We have a motion, we need a second.
I think Mr. Meeks made the second.
Okay.
And before we actually cast a vote, let me, this is a good time to announce that this year, the Regional Jail Authority Chair is from the City of Portsmouth, our very own Dr. Curtis Edmonds. So Doc, we want to wish you well this year in your leadership with the regional jail, and thank you for what you do. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. And I expressed this at a public work session a few weeks ago. Being the host city, I'm going to be a dissenting vote on this only because I feel that as a host city, we're not getting as good a break as I feel that we should get. And I don't think it should be unanimous, so I'll be the dissenter.
Well done. All right, we've got voting.
This item has been adopted 6-1. 15-52, adoption of a motion to permit the adoption of a retired police, Portsmouth Police Department Mounted Patrol Unit HORS. Vision principles: Quality of life in neighborhoods and sense of community, electronic roll call. And I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-53, boards and commissions, Vice Mayor Simmons?
Yes, thank you. Mayor members, I have one request for a reappointment tonight. Mr. Ian Vaughn, who is the architect on the Downtown Design Committee.
Move for adoption.
Second, all right.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-54, items submitted by council members.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, I would like to request to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
We're in need of a second.
Okay, is there a second to add? All right, wake up here.
We have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda. You're voting electronically. This item has been adopted 7-0.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, I would like to move to change the council calendar of meetings to eliminate the Monday work sessions beginning July 1 for the rest of the calendar year.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. Council members, just before I read the vote, even though it is posted on the board, because this is not an advertised, I need to open it to the public.
And I need to amend my motion. The rest of the calendar year.
July 1 through December 31st? You might want to readdress it the new year, just to make sure.
Okay, I'll leave my motion alone.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I didn't forget you. Because this was not a posted agenda item, City Council normally allows the public to have an opportunity to speak. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the motion before the City Council, you may at this time come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on the motion, which is before council, which is the elimination of the Monday public work sessions. Okay, members of the City Council, that part is closed, and your item has been adopted 7-0. Any other items by council members?
Yeah, let me, first of all, I'm sorry, I fail to recognize, we have a school board member in attendance. Ms. Sarah Duncan Heinz, would you please stand? It's always good to see our school board members in attendance. And where's Ted Lamb? We're not going to forget Ted this time. Where's Ted? Ted, would you please stand up? I asked him to grow a beard because we're always overlooking him. And I think at the Martin Luther King Breakfast, he was referred to or introduced as Tim Lamb. So I told him that he's the Rodney Dangerfield. He gets no respect. So it's good to see you, Honorable Ted Lamb, as well as Ms. Sarah Duncan Heinz, and thank you for your participation. Okay, secondly, and I hadn't planned to do this, but Mr. Toler slid me a note here, and he's given me some items here that I won't go into detail, but I will, for the sake of our audience and the council members, cannot participate until the audience during the month of February don't participate. We have Black History Month coming up in February, and there's quite a few facts here that Mr. Toler has provided to me that was in the paper in 1986 by Ms. Ada K. And he wanted these items put out in the public, and I really thank you for that. I think over the years, he's come up each month and questioned why we don't recognize or say something. And I think normally, we have one or two members. So what I'd like to do tonight, without getting a response, is to put out some names. Now, Boy Scouts, some homework for you. I'm going to mention some names, and if somebody during next month, which is Black History Month, would come up and tell me something significant about these, I'll adjust your taxes. How's that? Okay? All right, so with that.
I write these days.
Okay, Mr. Raymond Turner, Dr. James Holly III, there's a significance for that. Ms. Nancy Wheeler, Dr. Hugo Owens, Mr. Harvey N. Johnson, Sr., Ms. Ruth Brown, Ms. Ada Barber, Jeffrey Wilson, Junius Kellogg, Charles Peet, Barry Wright, no relation. Church Ebenezer Baptist Church, Emmanuel African Methodist Church, Zion Baptist Church, Pace Church Church, Mount Herman Baptist, Twine Memorial. And there's a neighborhood here by the name of Lincolnsville. Somebody want to know what's the significance of that neighborhood here in Portsmouth? And he has Mr. James A. Overton. I'm sure he's not talking about Slim, he's talking about Big Slim. And there's a couple of other things here. So just some names I want to throw out, and if anybody care over the next month, February, to come up and share what you know about those individuals, again, we'll greatly appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Toler, for giving us these facts. I want to thank Ms. Ada K. She's very good at making these types of things known to the public through, by way of occurrence. So with that, Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, Mayor, I think it's appropriate to let crowd know here today, and those that are watching, that we have legendary greatness right in our midst in the person of the Honorable Johnny Morrison and Honorable Cynthia Morrison, being the first in the position that she holds. And also Judge Morrison being the first African-American to become Commonwealth Attorney of the City of Portsmouth.
So, add those names, all right? Remember, we'll adjust your taxes. Thank you, Judge, for being here. Oh, you're still alive, right? At least that's the word on the street, you're still alive, okay. Okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, this is a shift from the African-American history quiz. I'm curious in finding out if I could get from the city manager, there are several entities that we hear a lot about, the EDA, Economic Development Authority, the Portsmouth Partnership, the Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission. And I would like to get information in regards to any contracting that they're doing on the behalf of the city. I know there's quite a bit of economic development that goes through those entities. But I'm not clear as far as the actual contracts that they are doing on the behalf of the city.
And the relationship between the city and those.
Exactly, and exactly, exactly who serves in those capacities and the diversity of those entities.
Okay, sure, that's an easy one. We can get that information, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, very good. Okay, anything else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-55, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 15-56, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Tina Artis. And she's followed by Ms. Sandra Bracy.
Good evening, my name is Tina Artis. My address is 825 Brighton Street here in Portsmouth, Virginia. And I come before you this evening asking or requesting that you all reverse the decision that was made maybe a month or so ago as to changing the name of the street that I live on, Brighton Street, to JTF Fisher Parkway. I'm requesting this reversal because this is an issue I hold near dear, close to my heart because I have been a lifetime resident of this street. And also, my father, before he passed away, he has owned property, he has owned six of the seven lots that's located on Brighton Street for over 65 years. And currently, we have two businesses that are ran off of the street, and I have letters here to state as representatives of Diamond Metal LLC stating reasons why they wish to reverse the decision as well. I was unaware of the last time that this was brought before you all. However, I was aware of when it was brought before the planning department, and I did show up, and we vote, and they voted, and they voted to deny the change. However, like I said, I was unaware of when it was brought before you all at first. I also feel that a reversal should be brought on this issue because J C Fisher, he is a good citizen, or he was a good citizen of Portsmouth. However, he has never actually ran a business or lived on the street of Brighton Street. And like I said, this is an issue that I hold dear to my heart because I have lived there of many years, or all my life, and my family has lived there and owned businesses on the street. Also, I feel that this would be a very expensive endeavor if we take on this project from the city point of view as well as the residents of Brighton Street. We have, I have a few family members that live on Brighton Street that are on fixed incomes. I'm a new mother to a newborn child. And so, like I said, this would be a very expensive issue for us. You know, we have to go through insurances, have them come out and reevaluate our homes, and have to contact many people to let them know we didn't actually move, but, you know, the change has allowed the name of the street to change. And also, last but not least, I'm asking that you all were taking consideration that if we change the name of the street, that it would be affecting six owners of six of the seven lots that is located on Brighton Street. Are there any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. We actually, we publish that like we do with all of our items and so the public have a chance to come in and have their say prior to us voting on that. So I apologize that you didn't see that and weren't able to come out. And congratulations on being the new mother.
Thank you.
This is difficult for people that's being affected when municipalities do things like this, but we have, and just as I list this long list of names for next month for Black History Month, Mr. Fisher is one of those types of people that has had a longstanding business and have done a great service, not only as a businessperson to the City of Portsmouth. And we, as a council, voted to do this because of him and his work and what he means to the City of Portsmouth. Now, his business is on the corner of Effingham and Brighton, correct?
Correct, and the address is Effingham Street.
And so we do, I am sensitive to the things that you brought up, but in times like this with great people like that, there are certain things that we do as a locality to want to make sure that we honor and remember those people. And this was one of the things we did. And I'm sorry that it hurt you. I wouldn't be in favor of reversing my vote because of what Mr. Fisher has meant to the city. Vice Mayor, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Artis, I was going to say, I'm sorry you didn't know either because in fact, when we took the vote, there was a fairly large number of folks here. And I asked how many people in the audience to please stand who were in support of making the change. And I would say 12, 15 people stood up. I asked who was not in support of making the change, and not a soul here stood up. And it was a unanimous decision. If you would like, there's no such thing as reversing a decision. However, if you would like to petition the city to change it back, I'm sure the planning department or the city attorney can advise you how to do that. But we can't reverse that decision.
So I could go about it by contacting the planning department?
Yeah, exactly what the Fishers did. It's the whole process all over, I think, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Yes, ma'am. Good night. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Sandra Bracy? Is she here? Mr. LeBradford Smith? Is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, is that Ms. Bracy coming forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Sandra A. Bracy. I am a lifelong resident of Portsmouth. The only time I have left the city was in service of the military. My position is that we need to address, as a city, the need to evaluate bullying. We tend to think of bullying as something that happens between children and teens. But there is a problem with adult bullying. Bullying tends to evolve throughout the city. We have people who use cyber. We have people who use cyber space to bully people. We have elected and appointed officials who use their positions to bully people. We need to reevaluate our stance on that item. Our children look at social media, Facebook and Twitter, and they see people, adults, arguing back and forth like children on the playground. So they think it's all right. And some of those people doing the arguing are people in power. They use their position to intimidate and threaten people. And we need to stop that. We have people who are fearful of saying anything, in fear of reprisals. We need to learn how to dialogue. And stop this stuff. We have a lot of people who are afraid to say anything. Fear is a terrible thing. People won't say anything because they're going to mess with my taxes. They're going to call the IRS. And all this kind of stuff. We need to work on how we treat our citizens. We, the people of Portsmouth, elected all of you. We, the citizens of Portsmouth, helped to appoint some other people. We need to respect our citizens, no matter where they live or what their position is in relation to your positions. Like the young lady just commented on changing the name back. I commend Ms. Simmons for telling her what the way to do it, go about addressing her concerns. But we have other people who won't do that. They'll say, well, it's already done. If you say this or you say that, I'm going to make you pay. The mayor made a joke about children or some of the people in this meeting noting who those African American giants were, that he would reduce their taxes. But there are other.
Adjust. Didn't say reduce, I said adjust.
Well, you know, adjust. You don't want no adjustments.
That could be up or down, right.
But by the same token, we have other people who say, well, we're going to make you pay. And we have to get over that mentality of trying to make people pay because they disagree with us. We all have a right to our opinions. And you, as elected officials, have an obligation to talk to us like we are people. We are citizens. We help to fund this city. And we don't need to be treated like second-class citizens, no matter where we live or who we disagree with. And as I said, I am a lifelong resident. I was born down here where they built this, this building sixty-eight years ago. The only time I ever left was for military service. So I feel I have a right to say anything I want. If I disagree with you, I'm going to tell you. I'm not going to disrespect you, and I expect the same from you. Respect my opinions. We can all agree to disagree, but we don't have to treat anybody like a second-class citizen.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And Ms. Bracy, if you would just stay at the mic for a minute, I want to share with you, I had the great fortune of attending a school board retreat last year, and I see two of our members here. And that subject was talked about in great detail. And I can't remember who the school board had leading that dialogue, but they talked about bullying because it's rampant throughout our city and our schools, and gave various definitions of what bullying was. And it really opened my eyes to that. So, and as you were talking, I was thinking of that, and I don't know, well, Dr. Whitaker used it at me. I don't know who was the moderator for that whole piece with talking about bullying in our schools, because I think we had quite a few instances when, in our school system that it happened. And you're right, on cyber and everywhere else it happens. And it is about civility and treating people with respect, and we can't agree to disagree. I just shared with the young lady that talked about the name change, and I wanted to let her know that I feel for her, but I disagree. And that's okay. And she's going to leave out here knowing the mayor at least heard her and told her that I didn't agree with her position there. So thank you for coming up. And I don't know, I don't know where we are with this bullying throughout this country, but it is, it's out of control. And it all starts with each one of us, looking in the mirror.
Like I said, we tend to think that bullying is a childhood or preteen.
That's right.
Thing, but we have adults who bully people.
Right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Ms. Bracy, thank you for coming up. I'm curious, when you make a statement like that, that's very serious. And to direct it at council and city, can you be more specific as far as your instance?
That did the bullying did not realize that what they were saying was on a telephone line that was on a speakerphone. And like I said, I was not the victim, so I don't feel it's my place.
Okay.
To call this person's name.
Okay. That's fine.
I was not the victim.
That's fine.
But I felt that it was something that needed to be addressed, because we teach our children about what we did. And if there was a child listening, the child would have thought, this is how I'm going to get even with JoJo, because JoJo says such and such about me. We need to reiterate that we have a, an obligation to our children to learn how to act civilly and respectfully to everybody. Like I said, we have to learn to disagree.
Thank you. We got you. Thank you for coming up. Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Mr. LeBradford Smith.
That's Mr. Smith's coming up. Boy Scouts, good night. You got your homework for next month? Right? All right. Everybody get a name. How you doing, Mr. Smith?
How y'all doing?
All right.
My name is LeBradford Smith, and my address is twenty-seven Riverview Avenue. And I have been living in Portsmouth for twenty-three years. And I want to speak on bullying also. And I'm a mentor, and I'm helping the kids in the inner city and the community, teaching them about bullying. It's inappropriate and it's wrong. And I believe we need more people to come together and show them the do's and don't of bullying, because they think it's cool, but it's not cool. And it saddens me to see you guys up there bullying citizens also. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it, sir.
Mr. Barry Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Barry Randall. I've already stated my address earlier when I registered. Want to share a quote with you guys from James Baldwin. He said, and I'm just paraphrasing, he said, when an individual is treated a certain kind of way, he becomes a certain kind of individual. And when things are described to that individual as a truth, even if they're not true, they become true to that individual. It hurts me that other citizens had to come here today to somewhat, I don't want to say waste time, but to speak about bullying. I'm so grateful to God that the Boy Scout stepped out, because I think that the scout leaders does such a wonderful job with our Boy Scout program. I'm here today, and Mr. Moody, I would appreciate if you pay attention to this part, because I really want to share something with Dr. Curtis Edmonds, and to show you how men operate, because I came here two Tuesdays ago, and I wanted an apology for how you treated me as a citizen. Dr. Edmonds, I publicly disagreed with you a few times. I came hard at you. You are one of our leaders here in the city, and therefore I want to publicly apologize to you. I want to bring a sense of unity, because as I sit back and I see, I see that we have people on council that does not care about all of the citizens of Portsmouth. I asked Elizabeth Simmons two Tuesdays ago, a very simple question, and I believe that our vice mayor is more intelligent than I am. And I asked her, does the lives of black individuals in this city matter to her? She did not answer that question. And even if you answer it tonight, it's too late, because they all saw it. And one of the things that I want to share with the other people that are behind me, that we need to stand behind, Mr. Edmonds, Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Kenny Wright, and also Mr. Paige Cherry, Mr. Meeks as well. I don't have anything negative to say about you. My issue is, this past week, I thought that it was over. I came and I said I would leave this situation be. I'm a taxpayer and citizen, and I have yet received calls to the IRS, to Dominion Power. And the two of you, you can just go on record to say that it wants you, you can lie on record, or you can admit to the truth. However, I think that if I disagree with you all, I don't have a right to call you at your job. I don't have a right to call you at your houses. And I definitely don't have a right, if I see you out in public, to try to harass you. What did I do so wrong that the two of you will come together to try to cause problems for me? I've received emails, emails, Ms. Si, twelve pages of letters and emails from her telling me how such of a bad individual that I am. I received hate phone calls, I had to take a police report, they had to put a trap thing on my line. They had to also, I mean, Cox Communication had to do that. Then they also had to go in and put a block on my church line so that we don't have to keep getting phone calls. And I'm saying to myself, are you upset because you can't burn a cross down in my yard? I don't know what's going on. I love all people. I build all people, but I would not apologize because I have a concentration in black people. And I am here fighting every day, working throughout the community, and I think I have a right to come here and voice my opinion because of the fact that I see something that is wrong. Mr. Moody, you chose to bring it the way that you did. And then you, before the citizens of this city, you said that I said something about your wife. Sir, I said nothing about your wife. What I said was, I apologize for voting for you, because I shouldn't have voted for you, and I voted for you so that you could keep your salary, so that you can pay for your, take care of your family, and take care of your side family. That wasn't disrespectful. I did not defame you at all. Sixty-seven percent of African American children are born out of wedlock. You have nothing in common with us as a people. The only thing that you have in common with us as a people, and it's sad, because I'm going to be fair, the way I fight against oppression of black people, I also fight against the foolishness of black people. We shouldn't keep having babies out of wedlock. And if you took offense to that, that was nothing for you to bring before the public.
Mayor, call a point of order.
Mr. Randall, if you could direct your questions and make it general and not be personal.
No problem.
I've called a, Mayor, I've called a point of order.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Randall, this is, this is your second time coming before the council about an issue. And the last time you came, you addressed that. Has, are you referring to something that has occurred since the last time?
Yes, I got a phone call from Dominion Power asking, was I interested in some type of charitable monies? And that as a church, they can't give me the money, but they could give it to me if I had a five oh one C three. But as a five oh one C three, I can't be involved in politics. I didn't know that Dominion Power does those types of calls. And I have a problem with that. You cannot bully me. I don't have a five oh one C three for my church. So therefore, like I went and went, we covered about eight hundred houses. Yes, between Saturday and Sunday for Stephanie Morales, we're going to continue on fighting. So I don't care who you call. I had a barber call me and say, you need to leave them people alone, they can hurt you. What you going to do? Put me in jail? I educate everybody in the jail cell. The word tells me that I'm not to fear those who can destroy my body, but I need to fear the one that can destroy both my body and my soul. And Psalms forty-one and eleven said, for this is how I know that the Lord is well pleased with me, for he has not allowed my enemies to triumph over me. And that's the same man. You could have at least, Madam, said, yes, his like matter, he made you vice mayor. But just two years ago, when I addressed you, and I said, address him as Mayor Kenny Wright, you said, I don't have to address him as Mayor Kenny Wright. I said, he's your leader. Member on social media. You said, the people are my leader, and that's who I answer to.
Thank you.
But this black man made you mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson.
Good evening. My name is Lakeisha Atkinson, and my residence was stating, was stated when I registered as well. I'm here as well to address the issue of bullying. Let me just give the definition. Bullying is unwanted aggressive behavior among school-aged children that involves a real perceived power imbalance. And let me just read some statistics as well from the CDC. Seventy point six percent of young people say they have seen bullying in their schools. Seventy, seventy point four percent of school staff have witnessed bullying. Sixty-two percent witnessed bullying two or more times in the last month, and forty-one percent witnessed bullying once a week or more. You may ask, what's the relation? Why isn't, why isn't this brought up at the school board? Because I feel like the city has an obligation to address bullying as well. National Bullying and Prevention Awareness Week is in October. I plan on following the paperwork and doing what I have to do necessary so the city can adopt a day in October for National Bullying and Awareness Month. So I'm just, I just wanted to put that buzz out there, and I think the City of Portsmouth should take lead like the other cities. Hampton has adopted a day. Newport News has adopted a day as well. And I also wanted to address what Mr. Randall said as well. If bullying is not cured at a young age, you become an adult bully. I do think, and I'm going to say it as well, Mr. Moody owes this man an apology. I actually heard this voicemail, and it's shocking to hear a council or elected official use power to threaten a Portsmouth taxpayer. I don't know if you guys can meet behind the scenes and discuss this and get with Councilman Moody, but I do feel like this man is owed an apology. Bullying is not acceptable as a child, and it shouldn't be accepted if you're an adult as well. On that issue, I wanted to address another concern of mine as well. I would like to, I would like the city to make public their contracts and how many of those contracts are black-owned businesses. Also, let's see. I'm going to end it right there. But I really, I would like to hear the opinions of some of the council members in reference to making that public, in reference to the contractors, and putting it out there of how many of those contractors are black-owned businesses.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. You done, yeah, I'd be glad to address the latter part of that. All of our contracts is public information. You talked about minority, the number of minorities, and I don't know if you're aware that we're in the process now of doing a disparity study. To be able to collect that data, to be able to address whatever disparities or things that exist within our city. We just created a minority and women-owned business enterprise committee, which Dr. Whitaker is chairing for the council. And when we get that report and we get that information, we're hoping to put things in place that if there are disparities and wherever they are, we try to do things as a city to make sure those things are on an equal playing field. So that's, that's a valid point. That's something that all of us take near and dear to our heart, the bullying, they, I have absolutely no problem with getting with you on something like that. I really, I attended that school board meeting, that retreat, and I learned a lot about bullying and things that were defined and classified. And I think they even went as far as putting examples out about what was bullying. And I was guilty of a lot of those things that they talked about. So it's good to be informed of things like this. So it's from an educational standpoint. But that information is public, and if you. But that information is public, and if you, I think, Dr. Whitaker, we're supposed to get that report by the end of this month or maybe next month-
Right.
...from a draft report? Yes, sir.
Right, and Ms. Atkinson, just want to share that actually, that's the report that you probably want to wait for, because it's going to be a more objective assessment, not one coming from within the city, but the council has already, the city has already contracted with MGT of America, just as the school board did, to conduct the disparity study, and that will give us some more scientific information than just something coming from the city. So I think you should wait for that report.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did get that thought back together. Is there a way as far as promotion or marketing of city council meetings? It could be made more public as far as there's billboards, there's other forms of marketing to where more people would know about it. I think the advertisement now is not good, it's not effective. I think we all want to see all of these seats filled, and I think, you know, there should be another marketing tactic implemented.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can look into that. Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Captain Lee Cherry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, City Attorney, Sergeant, there's a scene in the movie of Patton where he is being strafed by aircraft, and Sergeant Major, you may have been there when that happened, and he finally says, by God, enough is enough. Well, I'm here tonight to say enough is enough. I don't know what's happened with Mr. Moody and the prior speaker, but I do want to talk about a vice mayor for a minute. Over the years that I've spent in law enforcement, and these hash marks reflect both my career as a Chesapeake police officer and a sheriff's deputy, I have seen people come along that have benefited from their association with law enforcement. But every now and then, you get somebody that comes along that works with law enforcement because they really care. They really care about the people, they really care about the officers. In this case, that would be Vice Mayor Simmons. Not only does she care about law enforcement, but in public safety in general. She has supported the fire department, the police dispatches, the paramedics, and yes, the brothers and sisters that we now all wear blue. One of the stories, as I heard the speaker say, does she care about? Several years ago, when we had the CEU unit on the street, CEU unit, she was riding with me, and we went into Lincoln Park. There was a fight going on. After the fight settled down, I remarked to Elizabeth, or Vice Mayor, that one of the problems out here is you can't see, it's dark, there's shadows. These people live in fear of what's going on. These little children are running around in these shadows. Within two weeks, Councilwoman Simmons at that time got with Ms. Pam Capel and Sergeant Richard Harris, now Lieutenant Richard Harris, and they made a marked difference. The trees were cut down, new lights were put up. She didn't do it looking for votes, because nobody, nobody knew that she was even that much involved in it. She did it because she cared. She did it because those people needed help. I watched her at night stop with the police units and talk to the kids that were on the streets because she cared. So when I say enough is enough, I'm tired of seeing this lady being insulted when in fact, the truth needs to be known about her caring. Now, she was not the only person to ride with us. Councilman Moody rode with us. Councilman Cherry has ridden with us. Marlene Randall rode with us. You have council people that care, but to hear the vice mayor berated with what I feel to be untrue really bothered me. So Vice Mayor, I want to tell you something, ma'am. Your brothers and sisters in blue support you. We appreciate what you do, and as we say in our profession, we've got your back. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Dr. Whitaker.
Lieutenant Cherry, Captain Cherry, I'm sorry. Captain Cherry. The issues that are being raised are issues of disrespect and issues of character. You may not even realize in the statements you were just making that there was some level of community disrespect that you showed, even though you may not have realized it was culturally sensitive-
I didn't understand it.
And let me, let me finish. I don't know if you realize what you, if you said it, because you may be so comfortable in saying it, but you referred to the citizens and residents of Lincoln Park as these people-
Correct.
...and those people.
Correct.
That's a very insensitive way that has historically been used to refer to African-Americans. I just, I just want to point that out to you, that what has been said this evening deals with issues of disrespect and insensitivity. It should not be tolerated at any level, and so, just as comfortable as you were in doing that, I think we, as a council, need to make sure we are not exhibiting that also in our behavior.
May I respond back to that, Doctor?
Yes, you should.
I think sometimes it's not in the saying, but in the hearing. Are you so sensitive, sir, that you're taking it the wrong way? When I say those people, I'm talking about those people who lived in that community, just like if you said to me, the people in Simondsdale, I would say, those people in Simondsdale. So maybe it's the hearing that's sensitive more than what I'm saying.
Right. Thank you, Arm.
Thank you.
Captain Cherry. Good night.
Members of council, we have no additional speakers.
Okay. Good night. Regent.